I'd like to call the Celine City Council meeting to order for the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda in front of us. We have a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Move to approve as submitted.
Marle, move second. Second, Rhodes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rhodes, motion carries. We don't have any absences. We have a youth council update. Haley? Do we have a microphone? How are you guys tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, staying warm?
Yes. Hi, everyone, I'm Haley Burns.
Let's get the mic up a little bit so we can hear you. Great, thank you. There we go.
I'm Haley Burns and I'm the Chair of Celine Youth Council. I just wanted to give you an update about what we've been up to this past school year. We've been very busy and active since the beginning of September. We started off the school year with our annual Dress for Less sale, which we do with the Rec Center, and that serves as a fundraiser both for youth council and as a service to the community by offering discounted dresses to girls. As many of you know, youth council has also had a history of being really involved with the teen center, and since the Fifth Corner is finally up and running, we are continuing to volunteer and be, you know, participate in that but not quite as directly. Several of our members are on the Student Activities Committee for that. I believe one of them is on the Administrative Board. So, our role is more indirect, but we do continue to support all of their efforts.
Okay, I'm Heather Cunningham. I'm the Vice Chair of Celine Youth Council, and since it's the holiday spirit, we usually give a small sum of money to Celine Social Services every year, and we give about $60. And also, we were able to carry the Celine Chamber of Commerce van in the holiday parade. And in starting off the school year, we were able to have about 68 hours of community service from October and September. So, we like getting involved in the community. And so, looking towards the future, we plan to host our annual middle school lock-in in early February at the Rec Center. And also, we're looking forward to restarting our mentorship program site for sixth and seventh graders.
Will that be at the Rec Center again?
Um, yeah.
Okay, great. Great. Anybody have any questions for their youth council representatives? Well, thank you very much to come in and report on your activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, are you doing a Historic District Commission report?
I am.
Okay.
This is a package. Okay, this is the 2010 Annual Report for the Celine Historic District Commission. This year, our members were our Chair, Leo Babcock, our Vice Chair, Robert Morrison, our Council Rep was Brian Marle. I'm the Staff Liaison, and our Commissioners were Leslie Parcells, Robert Lane, Cynthia Christensen, and Michael Brown. This was a relatively light year for HTC. There were not a lot of review applications from properties in the districts, so we had only six meetings this year. Some administrative things that took place during those meetings, we, the Commission voted to look into changes of our ordinance because our ordinance is based on the Building Code, and the Building Code has changed, some fairly significant changes in the Building Code since the original adoption of the HTC ordinance, so we're looking into some changes to accommodate those Building Code changes. We do have a process called Delegated Review Authority. That's a process set in place to make it easier for simple changes within the districts to occur without the delay of waiting for a full HTC review meeting. So, this year, we added wheelchair ramps to the delegated authority, and what that does is allow me as Staff Liaison to review an application within certain guidelines and determine if it meets those guidelines, then the applicant can get immediate approval for their project rather than have to wait for Commission review. While we added wheelchair ramps so that, we also put a restriction on the delegated review authority excluded work in front of buildings or in highly visible areas. So, the classes of work that I was previously authorized to approve have that restriction on there, which really doesn't restrict things all that much based on the classes that have previously been approved. We were able to send one of our Commissioners to the, to a one day of the Michigan Historic Preservation Conference. It was in Ann Arbor this year, so it was easy to get to, so we had one go up there. And then, we had an opportunity to apply for a scholarship for one of our Commissioners to go to the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions Conference, which was held in Grand Rapids this year. So, one of our Commissioners, at no cost, no cost to the city, was able to attend that three-day conference. At Renshler Farm, Renshler Farm Museum, as you all know, is operated by the Celine Area Historical Society, owned by the city, cooperatively managed and maintained. The society contributes significant volunteer time and donated materials and labor, and the city pays for certain maintenance activities out there also. This year, the city, at least partially funded, because it's actually a cooperative funding agreement with the society for these, for this work also, siding and window repairs on the main barn. The main barn was painted, and tomorrow, there'll be new gutters and downspouts installed on the main barn. And those are part of a, kind of a long-term, multi-year restoration, is kind of a strong word, but catch-up on deferred maintenance plan for the barn and for the Renshler facility in general. So, those were the things for this year. Previous years, we've done some significant structural repairs inside the barn, and now we're able to get outside and do not entirely cosmetic, but more visible maintenance and repair items. I mentioned earlier that it was a light year for reviews. There were only three full Commission reviews, two for window replacements and one for an addition on the rear of a building. And those delegated reviews, those were also light this year. There were only three, two re-roofings and one wheelchair ramp. And that's all.
Any questions?
Just a comment, as the President of the Celine Area Historic Society, I give a verbal report at each meeting of the Historic District Commission, and we have had some very preliminary discussions about the possibility of putting on some public education programs next year to help educate people in what they need to do to take care of their historic properties and what their responsibilities might be to keep them from falling into disarray. And so, the Historic Society is anxious to work with the Historic District Commission on that effort. And then, also, I just wanted to thank Mr. Fordice for his efforts on behalf of Historic Society and the preservation of that museum out there at Renshler Farm. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Historical District Commission? Thank you. And Farmers Market Annual Report?
Well, we had two markets this year. The Saturday market went just as well as ever. We had a nice profit. I'm filling that space very efficiently now. We don't have a lot of space, and we're just cramming them in there. I had an average of about 17 vendors per week. The two things we're doing, the Project Fresh coupons, I think are really handy at this economic time, and we redeemed 638 coupons. And I know there's some of my vendors that redeem their coupons at other markets, which is fine, so there probably are even more coupons that come through our market. The thing that I'm trying to do still is to be able to take bridge cards. We really need a central location where we can put up a machine, whether it's using electricity or the, what do you call that, with the computers?
Wireless.
Yeah. I still don't quite know how we're going to do that because we don't have a central location. You know, I'm not there the whole time. I think that would kind of blow my budget if I was. So, I'm still trying to work with the vendors. They can do it individually. They have been resisting that, but vendors do that for a while until they decide it's really a good thing. Now, if each vendor did it themselves, that would work really nicely, so I'm working on that. Let's see, the Tuesday market, I think went very well for a first time. We had an average of about 11 vendors, and we had some kind of tricky weather. It was awfully hot, and the parking lot itself has the setting west sun, and so some of the vendors really got a little bit cooked. But they, they were very committed, and there were vendors that I couldn't fit into the Saturday market that said they would try the Tuesday markets, and then even some of them, then I got to know them, and I put them in the Saturday market to maintain our balance in the Saturday market. So, I think it went real well, and Leslie, the Director of the Library, says she would like us back next year, so I'm hoping that we can go ahead and do it again. And you know, each year, it's going to get better and better. More and more people will find out about it. I think that's all I have to report. Any questions?
You want to talk about the winter market at all?
Leslie's going to talk about the winter market.
Oh, okay. Any questions for Mr. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Nancy, for your presentation, as you do annually. I know last year, I guess I should say this year, earlier in January, you presented, and then you had a budget for 2010. I'm assuming that in January next year, in a few weeks, you'll be presenting council with a budget for 2011.
Yes.
I had a couple of questions regarding your, your actual expenses for the Tuesday The wages went about $344 over the budget, and there's a note below, and you indicated that originally, two hours were allotted for the manager's time, but two and a half to two and three-quarter hours were needed. Now, when you say manager's time at the market, that does not include all of the time that you, the market manager, invest per week, does it?
No. No, it, it does include all the setting up of the signs. That's what I had misjudged, because in the beginning, I would have to go to the library three different times to set up a note of parking signs and so forth, and I just had forgotten that the city does that at the Saturday market. So, no, that doesn't include all of my time. There's an administrative time that I've got in there as well, but that's the time it takes me to set up the market and be at the market.
Looking at the resulting expense in that category, wages, the number of hours at $17 an hour, it's the same rate that you use for the Tuesday that you use for the Saturday.
Right.
Would amount to about four, slightly over four hours per week, that were invested strictly in the Tuesday market. And compared to the Saturday market, actually, that ends up being less. The actual time in the Saturday market was almost six hours per week. But I wondered if, in the capacity as, as market manager, if, when you budget for the next year, you will need to, to consider an additional person to assist, or is, do you feel that you're overwhelmed, or is, are you able to, to handle both of these markets throughout the week without being taxed to the extreme?
You know, I thought I was doing just fine, and October 30th rolled around, and we started talking about the winter market, and I could tell. It's like, oh, no, not another market. Now, I can handle the markets just fine. It's really, it doesn't feel like that much to me. You know, thinking about doing a winter market too might be, that's where I might want to have some help. But, you know, I think I'm okay with that. If I need help, I'll get it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions for Nancy? Well, I just want to say you run a tight ship, so thank you.
Thank you.
Like to see the way it's working out, so keep up the good work. And, oh, Leslie, I'm sorry.
Let me just say, as the, as an experiment at the library this year with the Tuesday market, we were, well, I should say, I was expecting more grand attendance, but Nancy kept assuring me that for a first year, this was really a good effort, so I'm all excited about doing it next year. We're kind of looking at our parking lot to figure out, there's a different way we can arrange the tents so that people don't cook, because that, that was a concern. And you may remember that about midsummer, we did change the hours, and we bumped it up to 3:00 instead of 4:00. So, I think one of the nice things is we're flexible enough, we can work with it and make it, you know, make it work, so. Then, informally, I'm here just to let you know what's happened with the winter market. So, October was coming along, and some of us were getting a little sad that this was going to end, because we really were having a great time, you know, and the vendors, I don't know that they're one big happy family, but we all get along, and, you know, we all get to know our customers, and it just seemed sad that it was going to end. So, I don't remember exactly how this happened, but I think David and I were talking, and he is at, was at a spot where he wasn't, he didn't have any renters for his building, so we brainstormed a little and came up with this idea of doing a winter market. And let me pass these on. So, very quickly, we hired my friend Keith McGuire, who most of you know. He's very talented. He put together a logo for us that, you know, we wanted it to tie in with the regular market, but came up with that. We put ads in the Celine Reporter, we created posters, got them all around town. The money that we spent was all for advertising, and that was about $500. David came up with a plan on how to charge rent, which was very, very minimal. Mostly, we, the money that we charged was to cover the advertising cost. We talked about it at a meeting we had at the end of the regular market. 12 people signed, 12 vendors signed up right away, and we, we were good to go. So, next week, November 6th is when it started. We, we opened the doors, and I think that first week, we had 100 and some, 140 people. One of the fun things we're doing is Paul the Eggman, he's, he's right at the door. Every 100th customer gets a free dozen eggs. We clap, we shout, you know, so it's been great. Two weeks ago, the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Guild came and brought their toys, so they're there. We've had the Chocolate Lady. It's, it's been a good experience, and I'm kind of working with Nancy, hoping that we can figure out how we can keep a winter market going in the future.
Thank you. Okay, and the last report is Donna Duvan. You're here to talk about the Red Cross Blood Battle. Is America, American, is it just in the county, or is it throughout the country?
I'm going to go ahead and talk just a little bit about the work here of American Red Cross in Washtenaw County, but I am excited to say that we have, for the third year in a row, we have won the title for a blood battle, which is the U of M competition that has been going on now for the 29th year against OSU students in their, in their challenge to raise blood collections from both campuses. And so, it's always a win-win opportunity for both groups to really challenge each other to raise lifesaving blood, and this year again, we took home the title. So, I'm really glad to be a winner in that regard.
Okay.
I also wanted to bring you up to speed a little bit on the work that we're doing as your Washtenaw County Red Cross, and tell you and your constituents a little bit about how you might consider helping your community and helping your neighbors, especially during the holiday period. I'm the Executive Director here with the Washtenaw County Chapter, and I'm really proud to say that in every year, we touch about 100,000 lives here in Washtenaw County. And I would say a good portion of people that we assist and that we work alongside of are certainly residents here in Celine. So, we do everything from providing lifesaving CPR training and water safety training to over 65,000 residents every year, to helping family members stay connected in times of military deployments, and we work with about 250 families during the course of a year to provide emergency communications during their time of distress, as well as collecting some 26,000 units of blood with the help of residents here in Washtenaw County, much of which is provided again to the hospitals and to the patients here at our medical institutions, which again, provides for the needs of Celine residents as well. And perhaps what we're best known for, of course, is our disaster preparedness, and unfortunately, sometimes the response that's needed for response to tornadoes, residential fires, and even winter storms, which we're preparing for right now. So, we do all of this with the gracious support of the donors here in our community. 100% of the services that we provide here in Washtenaw County are donor-supported, as well as the good time and the gracious support of many, many volunteers who provide 97% of all the services that are provided here in Washtenaw County are at the hands of volunteers. I don't think it's any big surprise to note that we're not immune to the economy, just like other nonprofits. We've been working really hard to maintain our services and to cut back our costs in every way that we can. And so, this holiday season in particular, we know that we have a funding gap that we are trying to, to cover, recognizing that our donations are 20% down from where they were at this time last year. So, we're coming before you today to remind you that there are some ways that you can help us to meet our mission, as well as to serve your neighbors, and we wanted to bring that to your attention today. Every one of us, I think, wants to make our holiday giving as meaningful as possible this year, and so we'd like to offer a couple of alternatives that you may not have considered. One would be providing CPR training for a family member that might not be able to afford to do that on their own, such as infant child CPR to a brand-new mother or a parent. We'd also like to encourage people to consider setting a new family tradition of giving blood at this time of year. I think this is a time of year when many families are traveling, many people are not in their workplaces, which is where we frequently have our collections, and so it's an opportunity for families to come together again in the spirit of giving and set a new family tradition by giving blood at our blood center. In addition to that, we have a campaign going on right now that's providing holiday cards for military members who are actually on deployment. So, we are collecting holiday cards, which are being sent back to a local location, and then those cards are being distributed to military members afar, as well as in the military and VA hospitals. So, those cards are being collected up through the 10th of November.
Of December.
And finally, we want to encourage people to help us to be there when we're most needed by making sure that we have the resources necessary to respond when families in crisis need it the most. We have a holiday campaign going on right now, that's a holiday campaign where people can give online. They can purchase blankets and comfort kits for military members, they can support a family in a day's shelter stay, and many other ways that that gift-giving can support your American Red Cross, as well as providing for your neighbors. So, we really want to thank you for your support. We think that we can all do this great work, working together, and again, we do this on behalf of everyone in our community, and we consider the work that we do a gift of the American people, and certainly a gift of the people here in Celine, because it's everybody who makes this possible. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anybody have any question? I can attest those, you have nice lounge chairs now in your blood gathering, so a lot better than the things in the fire department, so.
Thank you.
Way comfortable, can practically go to sleep. So, thanks, thanks a lot for coming and reporting. Citizens and Comments on Agenda Items are in the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Or anybody that would like to speak to anything on the agenda. Move on the Consent Agenda, the following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Rhodes, Second Little. To approve and adopt items on the consent agenda as submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under Unfinished Business, Item 10-131, this is job creation related to tax abatements. Updated information, so the motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 17th, 2010 memo from Finance Director Corin regarding updated information on job creation related to tax payments and file. Do you have a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt, excuse me. Support.
Marle, Second Rhodes. Discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Renshler Farm, Item 10-135, the Renshler Farm Barn repairs. This will be the final payment. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 30th, 2010 memo from Public Works Director Fordice to authorize or not authorize final payment to Ted Micah LLC in the amount of $10,544 for a total project cost of $17,394 for the overage funding to come from the Historic District Commission budget by reducing other line items to balance said budget.
Move to authorize.
Rhodes, you have a second? Second to her. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under New Business, Item 10-174, 2011 Celine Winterfest. So, motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 17th, 2010 memo, application for community event use of public ways. Downtown Development Director Trapp regarding the 2011 Celine Winterfest. To acknowledge receipt of the November 18th, 2010 memo from Police Chief Button. November 22nd, 2010 memo from Fire Chief Heft. And then, November 29th, 2010 memo from Public Works Director Fordice. To approve or not approve the 2011 Celine Winterfest event to take place on Saturday, January 29th, 2011, on North and Southian Arbor Street, parking lot number four, east end only, parking lot number one, and at Hennyfield, beginning at 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., subject to the traffic engineer issuing the required temporary traffic control orders for this event.
Move to approve.
Is that Mr. Law?
Yeah. Support.
Rhodes, discussion? Mr. Law?
Well, as one who's been a major supporter of this since, I guess, our goal-setting some time ago, I want to compliment those who have worked on the committee. I know I was one, and many of them certainly have done far more work than I ever had on the committee to plan this, including Art Trapp, who's in the audience, and certainly, this is going to be, I hope, the great, a great event that rivals those of the Summerfest and Harvest of the Arts. Hope for a nice cold, wintery kind of day where people will come out and enjoy it, and so I appreciate council's support on this. Thank you.
Any further? Any further discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
There is an additional opportunity, which has just recently risen and is not contained within the document here this evening. And that is that the Teen Center would like to put on a 5K fun run walk in concert with the Winterfest, because it should bring more people to the community that would not otherwise be here. It would start and stop at the Teen Center. And they have developed two routes, a preferred route, which includes some cross-country things through Wilderness Park and Canterbury Park, and then an alternate route in case of heavy snow, which does not include those cross-country areas. The routes have been run by the police department, and they have no objections to them, see no problems with them. I recognize that this is an addition to what we have before us here, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to do. It would be a fundraiser for the Teen Center. And we have some individuals who participate in these kind of events on a regular basis who have offered their services to help us put it together.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilmember Rhodes had mentioned, the fifth corner and the proposed 5K fun run, I have been in contact with them as well. And I know that they've worked with, a little bit with the police department, and I just had asked them to work directly with the police and DPW to see what, if any, additional costs that may be, and then come back as a piggyback, if you will, to this, to the Winterfest in the very near future, because obviously, we're about a month and a half away or so from Winterfest. So if we can, if they can work with them to help pull together and see what kind of costs there may or may not be associated with, and bring it back before council, as far as especially any specific streets that may need to be temporarily closed, that type of thing, if there's any kind of, any other potential cost. You know, the Summerfest, they obviously use a lot of volunteers, have people at the various strategic corners of the course, if you will, so make people know that they're going in the right place and that type of thing. So my understanding at this point is they move forward that in the very, I mean, the next meeting, maybe the first, as late as the first meeting in January, potentially bring back official request for the necessary approvals.
Yeah, I think that's would be my suggestion, too, because, you know, the streets could be closed. I mean, we don't know what the route is or anything, so it would definitely need to be, I don't think we can approve that tonight.
No, I just wanted to alert the council that that was on its way.
Okay. So you'd bring it back on December 20?
I believe so.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Just keep up the good work. Excited to have the Winterfest. I was actually thinking it'd be good to have a cross-country ski loop if the weather's suitable for Hennyfield. Talk about that later, though, because that's sort of, you know, just like ice making, it's going to be definitely, let's hope that it's not the January thaw weekend, put it that way. I didn't just jinx you, Glenn. Okay, so there's no further discussion on this motion? Oh, Mr. Trapp, come on up. Do you have stuff you want to talk about in the package?
I do, I do.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. One of the things that we have scheduled is on Saturday, the 29th, from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock, and it's the snowman building championship of the free world. Actually, it's, that's exactly the comment I love. About two, three months ago, I was talking with the downtown director from St. Clair. And last year, they built, they had a snowman-making contest just in their community. And in the discussion, I was talking about we're going to have the Winterfest, and so we decided that we'd have a competition between the two cities. And then Zeeland jumped in, and also St. Clair, or St., Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan jumped in. So the four cities are going to compete for this snowman-building contest. It's 50 people, two hours, to see how many four-foot snowmen we can build. And the person that will make the count official will either be the mayor, Mr. Campbell, or the chief of police. And so I just wanted to kind of get this underway, that the snowman-building contest is something that we're all looking forward to. We can do anything we want to do that, except use mechanical means, which means we can't use, it has to be manpower versus like some kind of front loader or something like that. Hopefully, we will have enough snow to do something with. I've asked the-
Do we get a snow date? If, are there, are any of them in UP? Are there others?
Well, Sault Ste. Marie is.
So do we get a snow date if we don't, can't do it that day? Did you talk to them about it?
No, we all said that it's that day or nothing, so anyways, we're going to see what happens.
They might get snow and we don't.
Yeah. The school is going to pile up snow at Hennyfield, any excess snow, and so is Mr. Fordice. Instead of sending it down to one of our parks, we're going to try to pile it up there so that we can use it. My whole idea for this is to take a 30-gallon garbage can, fill it, dump it upside down, take a 20-gallon garbage can, fill it, turn it upside down, and then a bucket for the head, and that should be our four-foot snowman, so.
Oh, there's no aesthetic points?
No aesthetic points. But what they did in St. Clair last-
Just mass production?
Yep. What they did in St. Clair last year is that the following day, the merchants came out and decorated some of the snowmen. And the creativity for the merchants decorating the snowmen was unbelievable. I have some great pictures showing what they have done, and so we're trying to work that in. And the whole Winterfest thing is still very fluid. I've tried to give you the things that I know that I think we're going to do, and there's still some other things that we're working on that we have not completed yet. But it should be a good event. Hopefully, as I said this morning, I'm not sure if I should pray for rain, snow, sleet, cold, warm, I don't know what, but whatever happens will happen, and we'll go from there, and we'll see what happens, so. But any other questions? If not, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay. That's very exciting, Mr. Trapp. Thank you. We have the memo, the motion to approve. Great. The memo in front of us, and we have a motion to approve. Is there's no further discussion? All in favor to approve the Winterfest to take place on Saturday, January 29th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 10-175, this is Invoice Cloud, NDS Electronic Presentment and Payment. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 22, 2010 memo from City Treasurer Bennett. To approve or not approve the purchase agreement with Northern Data Systems for utility billing, utility billing, online payment service with Edifice, Invoice Cloud interface with an annual subscription fee of $1,200. To approve or not approve the utility credit card standard program option in anticipation of reducing the cost of producing, mailing, and receiving utility payments and billing inquiries while providing online 24/7 access to our citizens.
Move to approve and approve.
Rhodes?
Second.
Second, Little. Discussion? You want to come up and talk about it a little bit?
I do. I'm very excited that we can present this. We have a number of requests from our citizens to be able to have their banks automatically withdraw the payments out of their credit cards, or off their credit card, or through their checking accounts. We've had a number of people who want to be able to go online and look at their bill, and be able to do green, go green, and do a paperless billing. So back when I was working, we were working on the budget, I contacted Northern Data Systems, and they said, oh, we have this new stuff, you know, this new coming, but right now, so I budgeted for the old hardware. And with that old hardware comes a whole complacency that my staff would have to go through extensive training on making sure that we were credit, you know, that every time we took in information, that we disposed of it, and that our, we'd have to have new securities put on our software and stuff like that, to make sure that all the credit card information and people's banking information was completely secure, not laying around on someone's desk or anything like that. So that was a, I put it in there, and, you know, and then I kind of, lack of a better word, drug my feet to pursue it because of the timing on the training. So NDS contacted me a couple of weeks ago and said, you know, we know that you had been talking to us about this, and we'd like to present this proposal to you. And it was the 1st of November, and the sale was November 15 that it ended. And I didn't feel that that would give me enough time to research it and get it to you. So we, Todd and I talked about it, and we asked Alan to review the contract, and said, if we took it to city council in December and they approved it, could we still get the $2,500 waived that the software would cost? And they agreed to do that. So basically, what this will do, sorry, I have a frog in my throat. What this software will do will be to allow, we add an upgrade to our utility billing that we currently use, and what it will do is allow all the information to be sent out to the internet so that the users can access their data. So if the mayor wanted to go on and look at her water bill, she'd get up to 18 months of history and be able to go online, and the end user enters all the credit card information, and the end user enters all their bank account information, so that my staff doesn't have to enter that information and be responsible for the security of that information. The software that is in conjunction with Northern Data System, this Invoice Cloud, they are using the same software that Amazon and Microsoft is using for online security. So it's going to be, it is certified through the PCI compliant. And the cost of it is a subscription, which we're, you know, we're finding more and more now that you do software as a service in a subscription, which we do with our payroll and what we do with our tax history. And so it would be a $1,200 a year. That's for the piece to my Northern Data Systems and the piece to the provider, $600, and so $1,200 in total a year. There won't be any additional cost with this utility credit card program to the city other than any ACH transactions, you know, anything, anytime that they do that, the bank charges us 40 cents, which is, you know, a very insignificant cost for the cost of processing a payment. I'm also excited because this will allow the people to go on and say, I just want it taken out of my checking account, so there's no fees going to be added to that. That person enters your checking account number, and then there's a button that says, I prefer paperless billing. And statistics are showing that 2/3 of the people who do their online banking will do a paperless bill. And again, my staff won't have to maintain that data. That person updates it, and then the file comes back to the city and updates our files. So it's a win-win situation. Our citizens are going to be very excited about it. Currently, it will also add a piece so that when you pay through your online banking, like you've already got, you know, Comerica, whoever your bank is, has a piece where you get free online banking, and you go in and you pay your Detroit Edison or whatever through Comerica. Right now, we're a non-participating, because we don't have the electronic means set up for that bank to send us that file electronically. They're sending us checks. And our citizens are having some complications with that, because they pay it with their bank on the due date, but that check doesn't get to us. And so this last water billing, we've had a number of people who got hit penalty because they assumed that they're doing it online, that it's going to be here the next day. So that will relieve probably, I think Mary counted, we have 130 of those banking checks that come to us. So that'll relieve that. So it's very exciting, and I'm kind of plugging it for the viewers, too, so know it's coming. If it is approved tonight, it will, we're in the process of preparing bills right now. Water bills will go out January 1, and the NDS is going to provide all the little cards that gives us all the explanation. They'll get us the connection to our website so that people can start receipting and signing up with this next billing. So anybody have any questions?
It's great.
It is. I'm very excited. Thank you.
Being state-of-the-art. Thanks a lot. If there's no questions, we have a motion to approve.
Discussion?
Did you have, oh, you did have a question?
Discussion.
Oh, sure. Sorry, I'm fine.
We haven't discussed it.
I thought that's what questions were.
Okay, well, I didn't want to ask a direct question to Mickey Joe. Obviously, you've done the due diligence, and you've researched this. But I must tell you and council that I'm really not convinced that this is a proposal that would be beneficial for the utility user or for the city. And first of all, as a utility user, as a customer, I don't want to have to pay credit card fees every time I pay my water bill. We're looking at the minimum of $3.95 every time I go online and pay my water bill. Also, granted, the FYI is available electronically in this scenario, but our most recent city survey bears out that people want to receive mail. They want to get information from the city in a newsletter form, a hard copy. So looking at it as a consumer and as a citizen, I really don't see that it's that big of an advantage to me. Looking at it from the standpoint of the city, we're going to be paying a subscription fee of $1,200 annually, yet we're estimating that only 30% of our customers are going to be using this service. You cited a savings of $241.36 plus some staff time. Well, if we're paying $1,200, how are we going to make up that additional $1,000? I just don't, unless we can make this such that people will want to use it. You know, the option that they provided us, a $1.50 charge to the city, that's going to cost us quarterly bills, $6 a year per customer. If we could find a way to eliminate the credit card fees and make this friendly to our utility customers, yeah, I think it might be popular. But I'm sorry, I'm not going to be supporting this. I don't feel that it's really a good deal for the city.
I appreciate what you're saying. And as far as the credit card fees, there is an option, and I kind of had alluded to that in my memo without, because they proposed that option. However, there's some legality issues that need to be researched regarding the Bolt decision as to how we process, how we charge a fee if we built that into our rate structure, which, you know, my idea is, oh, yeah, let's just pay that and, you know, and let everybody, because the more people who get a free credit card, heck, yeah, they're going to sign up for it. But there is some legality on how that can handle with the Bolt decision-making and having the city include something into the cost for all users, but not all users benefit from it. So that was something that is still out there.
Mickey Joe, if I might interrupt you.
We-
With your permission.
Okay, well, we have got that option, and at this point, we were going with the standard because right now, I am having 3% of my people go out to official payments and pay that fee of $5.95 for their credit cards. That's just the people who are paying credit cards. On top of that 3%, I currently have using credit cards and paying $5.95 for water billing, I also have about 200 citizens using the online banking that are now going to be able to do it electronically. So there is going to be some people that are just going to use this. And we've had a number of inquiries of people who want to do it as an automatic payment, and each time they come in, I have to tell them, it's not available to you. So there are people who have inquired and wanted this service.
The Bolt decision, if I might, before we get too far from the-
Oh, I'm not the professional there. I defer that to Mr.-
Okay, but isn't that in reference to taxes?
Fees.
Does clarify that for me. It's not just taxes.
I don't believe the Bolt decision is. Mr. Campbell will clarify it.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Bolt decision is based on user fees, based on utilities. It was Bolt versus Lansing, I can't remember years ago now, but a few years ago, basically, summed it up, basically, the court said you can only charge, the charge can only be made up of the cost. You can't add things in. They attempted to add in stormwater costs to their sanitary sewer costs, and they filed suit against, and the court found in the favor of the plaintiff, saying that yes or no, Lansing, City of Lansing, you cannot roll that into your sanitary sewer costs. You can only base your rates on the actual cost of doing business, on the cost of providing that service, as in summary. So that the Bolt decision is for, based on utility rates.
Okay.
And in reference to the amount that I said that we would save by going this route, if, in fact, 2/3 of the people who signed up, assuming 30%, signed up for the paperless billing, that savings that I quoted in there is minus the 12, that is the net savings. That's the cost of the software minus the cost of mailing the FYI and the water bill and printing the FYI. So that would be a net savings.
Do the subscription fees enter in there?
The subscriptions fees are-
$1,200 annual?
Yes. Yes. That's taking the $1,200, subtracting out what it would save me for 2/3 of those people not getting the print, not getting a printed water bill and not having the postage on the printed FYI. Just 30% of those people would net us a savings. So I did take that into play.
I appreciate your clarification on these. I still stand in opposition, however, to approving the motion.
And I completely understand. I'd love to be able to absorb the fees and make it free to the citizens, because a number of our citizens would really take advantage of it. But at this time, I don't- But at this time, I don't think we can do that.
Thank you.
So I've been told by my attorney and my finance director.
The residents are obviously well aware of these fees that they would be charged by using.
Yes.
So they're buying into it, if you will, knowing.
Right. And currently, they are too. When you go on to make a payment through official payments for taxes or water bill, it says, are you gonna use your credit card? You know, you can use your credit card and if you say yes, it says additional fees will apply. You enter the amount of your payment and then it says, this is the amount of that additional fee. And, and they're paying them now. And it, they will be forewarned that it's gonna be a cost to them.
Just, just to clarify, am I understanding correctly, there is no charge to the customer for a direct debit or electronic payment? There's no additional charge?
No fees at all.
Okay.
Where, where currently with our official payments, there is, I think it's a $1.50 that a user's charged to set it up for their checking or savings account. So that would be a savings.
And that would be a one-time fee? No.
Currently, it's every time you use it, but with this, there would be no fee. So this would be an improvement to our current, what we have available for online payments only.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item 10-176, polling location use agreements. This is a motion to nullify received on November 23rd, 2010 memo from City Clerk Hill regarding agreement with Sleanary Schools, use of Liberty School as polling location, and agreement with First United Methodist Church, use of Chrysler Hall as polling location. To approve or not approve the agreements with Sleanary Schools and First United Methodist Church for use, use of their facilities as polling locations for a period of five years ending December 31st, 2015, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute said agreements as submitted.
Move to approve and authorize.
Second. Ivy, second to her. Discussion? Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this question is directed to Clerk Hill. On election day, I was approached by several voters at both Liberty School and Methodist Church who had some concern over the fact that the Methodist Church hosted Precinct One. And I had indicated to them that I guess I, to an extent, shared their concerns, but I was unaware of facilities within our municipal boundaries that were as accessible, as large, and who had deed holders who were as willing to let us utilize that space. Can you comment on that?
Did you say that we weren't willing to accommodate Precinct One?
No, I said, I said that the space that we provide for voters in Precinct One, the Methodist Church, is large, it's accessible, Precinct's three, excuse me, is large, accessible, and we have, you know, the deed holders willing to negotiate and let us use that space. And so in saying that, I was indicating to the voter that I was unaware of other locations in town where we could house Precinct Three.
The only other location that we have had an offer for use would be the First Assembly of God Church.
Okay.
But I was in that location and it's, it would be their all-purpose room or whatever and it's very dark in there.
Okay.
But that is an alternate consideration if we do have to move.
Okay. I, I think the, the two individuals, they had a concern with utilizing a religious institution. And I guess, like I said, to an extent, I share their concern, but again, I was not, I am aware that we don't have a plethora of options within the city.
There are not.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Hill.
Hey, Mr. Law?
No, it's okay.
Any other questions? Anybody else have questions? Motion, discussion on this motion? Okay, there's no further discussion on this motion. The motion is to approve and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-177, MERS Actuarial. This is a motion to nullify received on November 10th, 2010 memo from St. Andrew Campbell to request or not request a MERS supplemental evaluation or actuarial for retirees' COLA for 2011.
Move to, to request. Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Should change that.
We have a motion, a second to request. Mr. Campbell, do you wanna?
Yeah, Mayor, excuse me. I wanna withdraw my motion. I would be happy to alter a motion to not request. Excuse me.
And Mr. Law, you had a second. Was that your second?
No, I've withdrawn. I don't, who else wants a second?
Okay, we have a motion to not request. Do we have a second?
Support.
Second, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Campbell, would you like to speak to the memo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we typically do on an annual basis, or supposed to do on an annual basis, this opportunity that MERS allows for the city to give an increase, cost of living increase for current retirees. As stated in my memo, they have changed the process a little bit. They used to provide an actuarial to say, this is exactly how much it's gonna cost. Now they've added, before they even, we have to pay upfront before we even decide if we wanna do that. We did, by using the information that we have, we did our own actuarial that is close. It's certainly not exact, but it's pretty close. We feel confident in the numbers. The, another thing to also note is that because we are under 80% funded, we would have to pay this in upfront as opposed to paying installments and be absorbed over X amount of years. This would be, we have, we would have to pay this upfront. As you can see, the numbers on the second page of the memo, for 1% increase, total cost to city is $15,047. Again, approximate $30,000 for 2%, 46, et cetera. And it would be staff's recommendation to stay status quo at this time, essentially because of the current economics status that we're in.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion? This motion, second, is to not request. Just for clarification. Is there further discussion on this motion? All in favor to not request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any commissioner committee reports? Mr. Rhodes.
I'm only gonna mention that I'm gonna pass on reporting on the youth council since that was so ably taken care of earlier by Haley and Heather.
Are there any other commissioner committee reports? Do we have any reports or other announcements? Mr. Law, didn't you say that you wanted to, did you talk to Mr. Campbell about a sign?
Yeah.
We're gonna have a roll sign in front, like, as I drive by there frequently and there's already people playing on that.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that briefly.
Sorry, for those of you that don't know, we're talking about the ice rink.
Right, for signage. Yeah, we talked, actually.
Weird sidebar.
Jeff and I briefly talked about that, Jeff Fordice, prior to the meeting. So yes, we, we are gonna need to get some signage, you know, open, closed, get your own risk, those types of things, and we'll get those up post haste. So right now, if, if it's okay, if I might, Madam Mayor, right now, we're just, so yeah, we're up to date. You know, it is up, obviously, anybody that's driven by, DPW put it up, looks good. However, we believe we have a leak. So Mr. Fordice and his team have been diligent working with the, the rep as well as the manufacturer. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fordice, but I believe the last I understood it, we're gonna leave as is and then in the, in the spring, when we're done using it, recheck it. And if we can, we, we believe it's possibly in a seam, but now that it's frozen, unless we have a, you know, obviously, a long warm spell where there's nothing there, so we can realistically check it, reasonably check it, I would say, we will wait till the spring. And then the manufacturer said that if indeed there's a flaw, a rip in the seam, that they will replace it. So we're in the process of getting that in writing, so.
Just gonna say it's in writing.
Yeah, not yet, but that was, then again, that just, obviously, they set it up late last week, over the weekend, they started to freeze already. Saturday was the big, kinda big night, they really started to freeze and still has a ways to go, but we're building, they're building up the layers and that type of thing, so.
Mr. Little?
What will be the hours of operation that you're gonna put on these signs?
That's a good question. I would think, go ahead.
Well, I, this was another time and another place, but where I grew up, there are three ice rinks in the town, outdoor. And the heaviest use was in weekday evenings, up till about nine o'clock, and then hockey took over till about 11:00 or so. And then, that was just every weeknight. And the weekends got a little more play and so on. It was a cheap date. And, you know, it was a place where people could congregate, mostly high school kids, some middle school, or whatever they called it back then. So I would encourage that there be no limitations necessarily. I'm guessing that you're gonna have somebody go play half, half ice hockey on there when nobody else seems to be skating, but I don't know about that. So I just would encourage it to be pretty open as to what the hours of operations would be.
Are, are you working with the Parks Department, with Carla, to develop a set of guidelines for usage and?
We will be, yes.
Okay. Are you gonna run it past council?
Hmm.
Because, like I said, there's people on there already enjoying it.
Well, yeah, well.
Not necessarily skates, but.
It's not, yeah, it's not completely frozen.
Two, probably middle schoolers today out there sliding around, having a blast. And as we've discussed before, I get those lights in my, you know, bright and early, 4:00 AM, so I know exactly who's out there, so.
They might, they may get a little wet at this point because there's pockets here and there of the, that are frozen and.
But yeah, we, I don't know if you're gonna put a sandwich sign or something more permanent, but I think this is your, just to protect our liability, for sure, please skate at your own risk for now.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A comment, there is a timer on those lights at Henny Field. If it's coming on at four o'clock in the morning, then that timer hasn't been set. So once the hours are determined for the rink, we could tie that into the timer for the lights, if you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Ivey?
One comment. I observed the new rink and I noticed that around the outside perimeter, there's a skirt that meets the ground and it looks like, in some cases, it could be a potential tripping problem. And I wondered if, if that's gonna get tucked in or are we not really complete with the installation of the perimeter?
I'd forward that question to Mr. Fordice.
The installation is not fully complete. We can't finish it until the ice surface is built up. Due to the leak, we initially installed it per the manufacturer's directions and, and put in the full depth of water. That's the standard way to do it with this system. Because of the leak, that system, filling it all at once is not working for us. So we need to build that ice up in thin layers at a time and hopefully be able to kinda bridge, freeze over the, the leak and get the full thickness of ice we need. Once we get the ice, then there are some additional boards that need to go in to protect the liner on the inside. And at that point, we're gonna figure out what to do with the, the excess, particularly in the corners where it's, because it's a, it's a square or rectangular liner and the corners of the rink are rounded. So there is a bit of a flapping issue on the sides and we're gonna come up with some way to secure that. And then we need to deal with the, the ground that has become very wet and, and frozen because of the leak. A lot of the water is leaking between the sidewalk and the northern edge of the pond. So we're working on some ideas for getting people across that grassy, muddy, icy area and into the pond.
Put the bleachers, yeah, bleachers, just put bleachers there.
Yeah, there was some discussion about bleachers.
Maybe you could put that over that icy area.
Yeah, that might help.
Any other questions about the ice rink? Any other reports or announcements? I know everybody's so excited about that. Mr. Morrow?
I just wanted to follow up from our, one of our last work meetings, Mayor, and also from our goal and strategy session with Mr. Campbell. I was wondering if, if something could be done in the next month or so to schedule a, or another meeting, excuse me, for the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force. And we talked about drafting a final report and that, that committee's sort of been on hiatus since probably July or something, but we have some data. I think we can draft a final recommendation to council. So in order to tie up some loose ends, I wanted to, wanted to recommend that tonight.
Are any other reports or announcements? I was at the NLC Congress of Cities last week and I did get this done in this weekend, so I don't have a formal report. I will say that there was a lot of really good information there and I will have some stuff for staff. And also, I, I think I mentioned to you guys back in the summer about the Let's Move Cities Program, which the Health and Human Services Regional Director was there, so I talked to her a little bit about the program. And, you know, the PUPS Task Force has been talking about that. So we're, there's still some interest in working in that program to address childhood obesity and healthy communities, so we're moving forward with that. And working with the schools and partnering on some healthy, and the hospitals with some programs. So as that comes along, I'll let you know how that goes. But it was a pretty intense conference with, I don't know, people from all over the country. There's a lot of good information on economic development and, so we'll see. Told Todd this afternoon, a meeting we had that, I have a lot of stuff to, he sort of got the, oh, no. But actually, there were some vendors too that looked really interesting. Some, some interesting telecom projects and then some opportunities for cost savings around some other things. So I'll try to compile a report and have it ready for the February, or December 20th meeting, sorry. And other than that, I don't really have anything else. Mr. Ivey?
Along with the mayor, I also attended the National League of Cities Conference in Denver and I just, to make it quick, I just wanted to sum up that the opportunities for interacting with other city officials from all over the country and various sizes of cities and towns, they were very rewarding for me. I got a lot of takeaways that I'm thankful, very, very thankful for the opportunity to, to attend. And I'd like to, to thank the council and the city for allowing us to have these sort of opportunities. And like the mayor, I really haven't had time to go into great detail about those takeaways, but perhaps our next meeting, we can go into some more detail. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other discussion items? Not, on public comment under the Open Meetings Act, any says may come forth at this time, may comment or question to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address to the record. Anybody that would like to speak to council? Not, is there any other business? Our next meeting is December 20th at 7:30. We do have a goal-setting follow-up on the 16th, I believe, so make sure everybody has that on their calendar. That's a very important meeting where we can analyze what we worked on a couple of weeks ago. So at this point in time, we need a motion to convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing a confidential attorney opinion. Council will not reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of a closed session.
Move to convene into closed session.
Morrow, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Little? And Roll Calvo?
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ivey?
Yes.
Councilmember Law?
Yeah.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Morrow?
Yes.
There just.
Yes.
Convene to closed session at 8:40.